Good evening and welcome to the Maple Plains City Council's special meeting. It is 5:30 on May 8th, and I invite you to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay, second by DeLuca. Any further discussion? Hearing none, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. And just to note for the record, Councilmember Francis is unable to be with us tonight and did let us know that. All right. Next item of business, our first item of business this evening is the additional banking signature, and I will turn that over to our interim administrator, Shirley.
Thank you very much, Mayor and councilors. When I started, at first staff thought that I should be the signer, but because I'm here for such a short time and it's such a process, I really feel that it's important that you have someone from your council be the extra signer. And in cities where I've worked before, we usually have the acting mayor. In case the mayor is absent, then the mayor just can fill in and so forth. But it's entirely up to you. And so, am I not on? Oh, I'm sorry. So it was my recommendation that whoever the acting mayor is would be appointed to be that signature on the accounts needed.
All right. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So the recommendation then would be for acting mayor, who at this time is Councilmember DeLuca, to be the signer, additional signer on the bank accounts.
That is correct.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion?
Mayor, as long as the understanding is when the new administrator comes in, that they are the second signature, should always revert back to staff and the mayor.
Good point of clarification that this would be just during the interim time, and then once the administrator is onboard, then he would be removed. Thank you for that clarification. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Next item of business this evening is our sitter administrator portfolio, and I'm going to invite Pat Melvin from DDA to the podium to walk us through this. And I'm just looking at my phone because I have a couple comments from Councilmember Francis, so I'm paying attention.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for inviting me here this evening. I believe that you all have a copy of the profile that was provided by the mayor. And so what I'd like to do is maybe hit on a couple specific points. I want to talk a little bit about the salary range and also talk about the job description as well as the minimum requirements, which will then lead us to go ahead and to approve the profile. So if you do have any suggested changes, this is a perfect time to bring those up, and we'll certainly make those changes. And then we will be looking to go ahead and post the position tomorrow. And it'll go through, I believe it was June 6th is the date that we had identified. So I also would like to just talk a little bit about, after that, talk a little bit about interview day schedules. Because I know in talking with the mayor, she indicated that maybe what would be more ideal for the Maple Plain council is to have perhaps interviews over a course of maybe two days or something like that. So I'm certainly more than happy to find a schedule that best meets the needs of the council and work that. So to start out with, I will just share with you a little information. I certainly have handouts here if you'd like to see it. This may be information that you've already done when you arrived at the salary range that I was informed of, the $90,000 to $110,000, based on the five communities that Springstead compared Maple Plain to. That was Long Lake, Spring Park, Tonka Bay, Excelsior, and Mayor. You're right on target. That's exactly where the average minimum is, at $90,000, and the average max is $110,000. So if you'd like, I can certainly hand that information out to let you know where those wages are. The actual, and this is without the Tonka Bay city administrators wage, the actual wage average is at about $106,690. So if you'd like, I can hand that out, or if you have any preference, I have extra copies in case anybody, Judy, would like one. What would your preference be?
I'll just take one to have it.
Okay.
Put it in my files. Thank you, Pat.
Yes, sir. Pat?
Keep in mind, Pat, that the, there was some discussion with the city council back when Springstead chose those communities to compare us to.
Oh, there was?
Yeah. That I don't think anyone on council at the time was in full agreement that those were representative of Maple Plain.
Oh, okay.
But, that's fine.
Which I tend to agree with John on that, that particularly Excelsior didn't seem to really be in the same ballpark as who we are. But I'd be curious as to what DDA believes sort of is our, where are we going to be competing for or against people for this administrator job kind of defines the market.
Yeah. And I would say, you know, as I was looking at Maple Plain, I mean, a lot of my comparisons were, well, how did the city of Mayor do? And like we discussed before, that's in my mind very much a comparable bowl city. And in terms of candidates, you're going to probably get candidates similar to Mayor in the process. So, and I think, you know, there's a lot of different methodologies as to who you compare to. I think that when DDA does a lot of that, they take a good hard look at population, and that's what really drives a lot of comparisons.
The Springstead communities, we were in the process of doing a lot of work on public works. And I recall, they skewed every result we had because they had about seven public work staff in the city of Excelsior, which, if you took them out, it took two to three full-time employees out of the equation because they were so top-heavy with public works employees. I do recall that.
Yes.
And I can see right now a city manager salaried at $130,000, not even in our ballpark.
Yes. Yep. So, yeah, you know, if you'd like, I can certainly go back and pull that Excelsior out and just send you a copy of what that, you know, average would be if we did not have Excelsior in there because they are drawing. Yep, they are drawing the average up higher quite a bit.
So then if I'm hearing you correctly, DDA would have looked at these exact same cities that Baker Tilly did because this is from their data.
Yes, they, I mean, I didn't get.
This was Springstead.
Springstead, sorry.
I didn't get into looking at different comparisons because I had information showing that Springstead, when they did your comp and class study, had used those.
Perfect.
You know, I could certainly ask Tessa, you know, who she would have used. I guess I didn't ask that question. But I can certainly inquire and just give you an update as to who they might have, if they were starting from scratch, who would they compare Maple Plain to? And then also just share what that average would be without Excelsior.
If you're confident that we're within the range, I'd rather keep things moving so we can post this tomorrow.
Yes, I do believe you're, I believe you're right on target, you know, in terms of, I'm trying to recall here where the city of Mayor was. And again, I'm drawing a comparison between Mayor and, and I believe that you were, yeah, it's got Mayor in there at 75 to 105. And that was obviously a recruitment that we did in August of 2022. So I would say you're right on track, in my opinion.
Good. That's where we want to be.
Okay. Then going to the next item, the job description. The job description has been updated. I believe that Clarissa has had an opportunity to take a look at it and review it and note anything that isn't in there. So I believe that the job description as provided was up to date. I didn't see anything obvious that was missing. And so I'm certainly okay with that. The one thing that I would bring up is on the minimum requirements in the job description, or I'm sorry, in the profile, we had a minimum requirements for the administrator position as bachelor's degree in office administration, public, and this, I'm sorry, this would be on page, if you look at the profile, it would be on page nine where it says, minimum qualifications about halfway down the page there. It says a bachelor's degree in office administration, public administration, business administration, community development, urban planning, accounting, or related field. Second bullet under minimum qualifications is a minimum of three years of progressive related experience. Third bullet, demonstrated strong computer skills and the ability to learn and comprehend city accounting software programs. And last but not least, a Minnesota Class C driver's license. One recommendation that I would have for you is maybe on that first bulleted item where it says a bachelor's degree in office administration, public administration, business administration, community development, urban planning, accounting, or related field. I would maybe recommend that you say, or equivalent education and experience. And basically what I'm asking you to do is to consider somebody who maybe doesn't have a four-year degree but has perhaps worked in local government, and maybe they have an associate's degree or something like that. So if they were to combine that associate's degree with experience, you know, they would still be considered for the position. And I certainly welcome you to have some discussion about that. And it's the council's wishes. If you don't want to.
No, and generally you're correct that it should have an equivalency for experience. And generally speaking, it's usually two years for every year of experience. So if somebody didn't have a four-year degree, they could have eight years of experience. That's still going to be in addition to the three years that we're looking for beyond somebody's base education.
And, yes, and just to give you an example, in the Mayor minimum requirements kind of tagged on to the end was, or an equivalent combination of education, training, and experience, which provides the requisite knowledge, skills, and abilities for this position. One of the things that I want to emphasize is that at this point in the recruitment, we want to kind of cast a wide net. You as council members are going to have the opportunity certainly to evaluate people and to, you know, select who moves on in the process. But I don't think we want to necessarily exclude anybody from applying at this point. Certainly through the profile, we tell them what is, what are the values that you as a council are seeking. And so if individuals feel that they have that but maybe don't have the four-year degree, you know, I would encourage them to apply. But ultimately, it's up to your decision as to how far they make it in the process.
I would agree. A college education is going to teach you things like time management skills and what have you. But if we have a dozen skill sets that are necessary for this job and someone with 10 years of experience or five years of experience checks every one of those boxes, I'm not going to overlook them because they don't have a piece of parchment.
Agreed.
I'm in agreement.
And I don't think we need to put a value on like eight years.
No, that language.
Equivalent that language you said, the equivalent experience.
So there's consensus then, we're okay with that equivalent experience.
Okay.
And then I just want to make one suggestion. How about a valid Minnesota, or valid driver's license?
That's from Councilmember Francis, too. That was one of the things I was just re-chemailed. Could it just be a valid Minnesota?
Valid driver's license.
List of driver's license required, but not the class.
Is there a reason why a valid driver's license is a minimum requirement?
Well, I think you probably would, the expectation would be that they would attend conferences, they would go to meetings, they would, you know.
Be available for the state of emergency.
Yeah.
We need to all of a sudden be someplace, code enforcement.
It's defendable, John, given what you're asking the person to do, go to meetings.
Okay.
And you do encounter that in a lot of them, that they do have that minimum requirement. So just remove the Class C there and just have Minnesota driver's license?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what I heard. Okay. Thank you. Okay. And then I would certainly open it up to review of the job profile and terminology, pictures, anything that, you know, made you say, I'd rather see this other picture here or the terminology wasn't correct.
Would it be okay, Pat, if we went through just page by page?
Yes. Actually, that's what I was going to.
Okay.
Yep, suggest.
All right, then go ahead, I'll let you lead it, sorry.
No, no, you're fine. You're right on track. So, yeah, if somebody, page one, everybody's okay with that?
Aesthetically, I was wondering if we could use a different picture.
Okay.
That building no longer exists, it's not yellow and green, there's a BIF, that sign is no longer there, it's just, it's old and outdated.
Okay. Sure.
That's my opinion.
And speaking of pictures, what pool of pictures do we have to choose from?
Our website, our Facebook pages. I have a bunch. I mean, there's pictures all over.
Okay. Because the utility building at, at Versus Moore Park is in here twice, which is a.
That's what I've noted, too.
Eyesore.
Well, and former Councilmember Cahill took a bunch of pictures professionally that she said we can use as long as we give her credit, too. So we also have professional ones.
Okay. Yes, no, we certainly, this is the type of input that we invite and we appreciate.
I mean, if you drive for our city, you're not going to see this building anymore like that. So I mean, it's just, it's old to me.
Yes. No, no, that's certainly.
Sorry, it's a pretty picture, but.
Is there another picture that you specifically have in mind? Or would you like us just to work with staff?
Worker staff.
Okay. Okay.
On page two, the first of the Northside Park pictures, those need to be replaced.
It's also on page four.
Yes.
We don't even have Northside Park.
And I know that Northside Park does not exist.
Right. And I've never been a fan of the bicycle title.
I remember that from a couple of years ago.
I lost at that point, but maybe I can win on this one. Lose the bicycle.
And again, we have the old building behind the museum, and we have tons better pictures of the museum with like the flag out and open signs and flower baskets and.
Okay.
I think there's a nice.
Sorry, Pat.
No, no, no.
I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just.
And I don't take offense, I'm not the, I'm not the one who put it together, but I'll be going back and sharing this information. We'll get it, we'll get it fixed up nicely, so.
Yeah.
And then, are we okay with the line, it's in the second to last paragraph, about three up, it is envisioned to be reborn as a Newtown center?
Could you say again where that is, Judy?
Page two.
Yep.
Second to last paragraph.
Oh, yes, I see it. Okay.
I can see where I'm talking.
Yep.
Was I just, and if I'm the only one who caught that, then maybe it's just me, and I'm okay with that.
The paragraph's a bit flowery.
Is that what it is? Something's just off, like.
The predominant social and cultural art of the city, seriously? But.
It's almost like too much fluff, it's not real. You're going to find more people down at Iron Exchange or McGarry's or Veterans Memorial Park than, I mean.
Hanging around downtown.
Yeah.
So I will just scratch those two sentences.
Both?
Both sentences? Are we good to move on to page three? On the second paragraph on page three, it says near the shores of Lake Klassen.
Okay.
I don't know where that is.
I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Isn't that the lake that is off from the Rotary Pavilion?
Oh, is it by the school?
I believe so.
Nobody knows it, is that, that's the problem.
And there's no public access to it, it's just a lake.
Okay. I was like, I've never heard of that. Okay.
So just scratch, near the shores of Lake Klassen.
With a single K-12 campus in Long Lake or Orno, where is it technically?
Yeah. Our uniqueness begins with the single K-12 campus setting.
Okay.
Setting period.
Yep, and then just take that off. And then I don't, on the second line on that page, Pat, Orno Schools is located on a beautiful, or should it be Orno Schools are located?
Oh, yes, should be are.
That's what I thought, too. Okay. Those were my two on page three.
Okay.
Anybody else with feedback on page three? All right, we'll keep moving to page.
Well, on the bottom of page three, where it talks about the Discovery Center?
Yeah.
No mention there that that's where City Hall exists.
I wondered if.
Ooh, okay.
I mean, we're not part of the school, but we are in the school.
Oh.
Yeah.
Home of the early childhood program as well as a variety of community ed programs and the site of.
Current home of Maple Plain City Hall. Good calls.
Good catch. Thank you. Okay.
And page four has that picture again, just for your notes.
Yes. Got a little happy with Northwood Park.
If you go down, one, two, three, or second to last paragraph or the fourth paragraph, the Love Out Loud Music Fest is no longer happening.
Okay.
The traditional Boo Market has been renamed to Truck and Treat.
Okay.
And then in paragraph four, may I suggest instead of many dining options, could we just say a delicious variety?
Sure.
Since we have three, which is a few in my mind, or four. Any other feedback from staff or council on page four? Graham?
Did present this to staff and, on your all opinion, I don't know, but in the first paragraph does mention a wooded Native American burial ground. And that's just a point of contention, I don't know, confirm, not confirm, whatever that is, but I just don't know if you want to put that at the forefront or.
I actually did question that when I read it. I mean, it's facts, we do have that, but I don't think it's anything that draws people to our city.
Yeah. Okay.
And people don't come here to view it or to honor it, that I'm aware of. Anyone? I think we can strike that.
Just reference the wetland.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good suggestion.
Any other feedback on four? Okay. Page five. Anyone else want to start?
Go ahead.
Okay. On page five, the end of the first paragraph, city council is also advised by the Planning Commission and then remove and zoning board. We do not have a zoning board. And then, one other question, the beginning of the second paragraph, where it talks about police services. Are provided by West Hennepin Public Safety, which is a joint powers police servicing the cities of Maple Plain and Independence. Do we need to put in there that, mentioning that the two mayors have to be on there because of the JPA, like this just says, two Maple Plain council members? Do we need to say mayor and council? Doesn't matter.
I didn't think it was relevant that we have two council members serving on the commission because we didn't mention the fire commission.
At all, right?
So it isn't necessary for this purpose.
Okay.
So just remove that sentence.
Yeah. And then they'll know it's a JPA. And then related to that as well, when we look at the org chart, the police commission, I don't feel is off on its own completely because it is run through the JPA, but the JPA is made up of two liaisons, one which has to be the mayor and the other a council member. So to me, there needs to be a link to the city council and mayor to the police commission somehow. I don't know if that's straight down in a jig or, or if I'm the only one who sees it that way. Does anyone else?
I was looking at, thinking the same thing.
Because to me, that's not accurate. Police commission doesn't float by itself because as Andrew and I currently are the liaisons on that, we take direction from the council.
Okay. Yeah, no, we can certainly resituate that so that it would be, there'd be a line coming down from the mayor and city council over the police commission as well. Okay.
Bottom right-hand corner, I wouldn't call it a fire districts, call it the fire department.
Yeah.
Mayor and council, also that planning and zoning, you wanted to take that out on the green, down on the green to the right? It says planning and zoning commission?
Yeah, we just want.
Planning commission.
Planning commission, sorry. To me, that went together. Good point to name it. Thank you, Shirley.
Sorry, Councilmember DeLuca, you said fire districts, that should just be fire.
Fire department.
Department. Okay.
MPFD.
And I think it may get confusing where it says contract with Medina. We don't contract with Medina, Medina contracts with us. So as so as to avoid the confusion, I'm not sure that's even necessary there.
Just put fire department.
Yeah. This person will supervise the fire department.
And we already name up above that it's a JPA, so that covers that. So I would, I would agree with that.
So just put fire department, MPFD, and remove those two comments on the bottom there, in that box.
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
And then did you? And then, did you get Shirley's comment too of in the green box removing the zoning?
Yes, yep, so it'd be the planning commission, not the planning and zoning board.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, just for clarification, in, since both the police as well as the fire department are a joint powers agreement. Is joint powers the same as a joint powers agreement? Police services are provided by West Tenebue Public Safety, which is a joint powers police service serving the cities of Maple Plain and Independence. It's a, it needs, that needs some wordsmithing. And then, and then, fire protection is provided by a fire department that is also a joint powers service with Independence.
I think that just needs wordsmithing again. Fire protection is provided by Maple Plain Fire Department.
Right.
Period.
Which is a.
That is a joint powers.
Which is a joint powers agreement with the city of Independence. And then like Mike said, we can take the reference to Medina out of it, because it's fifteen thousand dollars a year. Just one small little corner. But I'm wondering, it, it just, that first sentence is very jumbled.
It's wordy.
It's wordy. Police services are provided by the West Tenebue Public Safety, which is a joint powers agreement.
Between?
Between the cities of Maple Plain and Independence.
Perfect, yep.
You know, and I did, what did you? Two Maple Plain council members serve on the police commission as well as the fire commission, I mean, if you're gonna, or do you have to take that out?
We actually scrapped that.
We strengthened it already, trying just to make it more concise.
Are there any more on page five? Otherwise, you can certainly move on to six. Appreciate all your comments and helping us to get this right.
Lots of details.
Yes.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to page six.
On the budget, third item from the bottom, I think is really a subtotal, not a community action programs.
Oh.
I circled, yeah, cause I was.
Okay.
I think that's the subtotal, then we transfer out a hundred and thirty-seven, therefore, that's how you got to the million seven one one.
Okay.
The million five should be the addition of all of the ones above it, if the math is right.
Okay.
And I don't even know if, if we need that subtotal line, it's a budget of one point eight seven eight million. One item is transfer out in contingencies, so just scratch the, that line and it'll all add up to the one eight. I hope it adds up at least.
So scratch community action programs across the board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, then while you're at it, since there's no value in recreation, I don't even know why.
Why it's in there.
Why there's a line in there for recreation.
That's what I was wanting to, just take it out, it looks.
It's just a.
Yeah.
It's just a word, Doc, isn't it, I'm sure, it's just a.
Yeah.
Thanks for not putting the the park photo in again.
Third time a charm.
I wondered if you did from your drone, okay.
I like that photo.
I do too.
Looks like you've got a lot up there on your tower.
Yeah, we do. Had a few meetings over those.
Really, yeah.
Okay, any other feedback on page six, upcoming projects priorities?
Should we reference in, with downtown development, um, you know, Gateway District Development? I mean, should we, cause it is a economic, uh, I'm, we're not, I don't think we're marketing Gateway as much as we're marketing.
Well, it's also because it's not ours to market.
I understand.
Just to be clear, cause there's been some confusion on that with residents, we do not own, the city does not own Gateway. So that is why we can't really market it, cause we don't own it.
In the upcoming projects and priorities, uh, the second bullet point says Emerald Ash Tree Grants were received and will fund residents replacing damaged trees. Um, first, that's just not what the, the grant is going towards, but then secondarily, or secondly, um, that's gonna be about ninety-nine percent completed as of next weekend.
Yeah.
And then it goes until June twenty twenty-four, but that point, it's just public works watering it.
Yeah.
We have to do two more reports stating that we are watering it between then and now, but I just, that's not gonna be something that, you know.
Let's remove it.
But it's.
It's not really the administrator.
Residents' trees.
That's the biggest thing, yeah.
These are, these are.
Parks, city.
Park and, and, and public driveway, are they not?
Let's remove bullet point two.
Correct.
Okay, yep.
Any other feedback on six? All right, thank you, Grant, let's move on to seven. I like this one too with the. On, okay, let me count.
We should've used numbers here.
If you go down to bullet point ten, the first words attend.
Yes, yep.
Let's remove Fire Relief Association.
Okay.
And, um, go down to the bottom, three up, oversee technology needs and improvements. I just wanted, thought it might be helpful if we had in partnership with IT support, cause we do have IT support for the city, I don't want a potential candidate reading this thinking they're on their own. Is that okay, council?
Yep.
And then right after that, oversee the procurement of materials and services. I thought it might be helpful if we had in collaboration with city staff, because we do have, um, support staff to help the administrator with that now, where last time we didn't.
Should we go back then to the chart and under contracted, put IT support?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should, good catch. What page was that?
Page five.
What little org chart was?
Okay, page five in the little org box for contracts.
It's small contract, it's a contract nonetheless.
Right, and if someone's not comfortable with that, you know, if that's.
So just add an additional IT under the.
Yeah.
The four items.
As a contract.
Yeah.
They're not on their, they're, in other words, they're not on their own for determining information technology.
Yes, okay.
Other feedback on page seven, essential duties of the position.
Is it essential or is it desired to have some experience with FD and PMS? Nowhere in here is there anything with, uh, dealing with JPAs for the fire department or the police department.
I think that would almost be on a case-to-case basis, you know, looking at their education, their experience and experience, but knowing that I, I believe most people, if they meet the requirements, would be able to handle that.
And, and without, without blanketing out the fire department, quite possibly it's covered in the first bullet point, because the city administrator is in fact responsible for the fire chief, which is responsible for the fire department, so they soup, they're supervising city, they're not technically staff as they are employees. So is it? It's not, it's not essential, it certainly would be a feather in their cap if they had. I recall, we had this discussion with Clarissa, and she had, in the small communities that she worked in, she had experience working with BD and the FD.
Which I think all of that will come out in an interview process, if they first get through the vetting of DDA and then to us. I would, I don't wanna limit.
And you're right.
Someone applying if they meet everything but don't have that.
Right.
And maybe just a suggestion, the next page is desired administrator attributes. Maybe that's something that you'd like to add in there, is somebody that has work experience with those two types of organizations, the fire department and the police.
And because attributes look a lot like job descriptions, I have a ton of feedback on this page.
Okay.
Some of which. I think it will all mesh together. When I look at something like this, a laundry list of thirty things, I'm gonna read over all of that, but I'm gonna focus on the first few and go, well, those must be the really important ones. So I think we're leading with the wrong foot here, if we lead with the finance foot on here. I went down and I found like the fourth one, the creation of a work environment that empowers staff. So I'm just suggesting a little reorder of these.
Sure.
And then, in a number of cases where it says strong or ability, I've always, I've always kidded us when you say, I have the ability to do something, I choose not to do it, but I have the ability to do it, versus a demonstrated competency or demonstrated, uh, financial skills. Then I can go, okay, demonstrate to me that you've got good Excel skills, not just that you have the ability to do it and choose not to. So in a number of these places, I've changed words like good to demonstrated.
Okay.
Or strong to demonstrated, I can get you a complete list of those.
Sure, sure, yeah.
But as far as the order for those first couple, I thought it'd be better to lead with the, in, the empowering environment, because at the heart of it, that's the fourth one down. At the heart of it, that's, you know, how will this leader lead? We want him or her leading with, um, delegating, empowering, those things. Then coming back with, uh, the strong interpersonal skills, because I think we all have recognized how important those are. Um, and then hitting the financial, then we can move on from there. Just a slight reorder, so.
Sure, yeah.
Three, the, the, the third item down that says ability to create work environment would now say experience or demonstrated ability to create a work environment. Then reorder to the interpersonal skills, then the finance. Then from that point, the order isn't as relevant, and I could be overthinking that.
And I add for the first one, either the second bullet point or the fourth bullet point, but same comment, I don't think we wanna start with finance. There's a lot more to the city.
Then, can we on one, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Bullet point, an individual with a wide scope of local government experience, preferably in management, can we replace management with finance? Because I think.
Well, we're still gonna leave finance in there, just move that bullet point.
Oh, okay.
That was my understanding.
Become the third versus the first.
Yeah, I just didn't want it first. Is that what you were saying, or did I not understand?
Exactly, simply the order.
Yeah, so still leaving finance, but just not leading with that.
And I would certainly welcome if the council would like to remove some items from here, I just know that, you know, in your administrative position, you're really looking for somebody who can be a, um, ace of nothing but a jack of everything, cause there's a lot of, you know, small local government, there's a lot of responsibilities and a lot of things where the buck stops there, so. Feel free if you'd like to eliminate some of these, um, bullets as well.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, bullet point number nine, well organized, follow that?
Yes.
Well organized and committed to developing and documenting programs, policies, and procedures for, uh, electronic retention. I'm not comfortable with committed to developing, um, well organized with the skills to develop and document programs possibly. Well organized with the skills to develop, yeah, that sounds better.
Are we?
I'm just going down on my notes, that's all.
Yeah. But I'm thinking they might not have the skill, like they might not know how to come in and use MIMI code, but they'll learn it.
It's desired, this is not, you know, if they've already got it, that skill set, it's, it's desired, it's not mandatory, it's not essential.
Basically, what this does is if there's a candidate who's applying, this really kinda says, hey, bring this out, whether it be in your interview or, or on your resume, bring out these points, cause this is really what the Maple Plain City Council is hoping. If you could get everything, you'd love to get that, but you're most likely not gonna get everything, so, um, hopefully the candidates will play to their strengths.
Okay.
Four down from that, commitment to customer service. Explain what, commitment to customer service by being responsive and patient while sharing information, explaining decisions impacted by ordinance and statutes.
The.
Patient while sharing information.
I, I think it was with the understanding that residents maybe don't know all of the, uh, planning and zoning or, or state statutes. So sometimes you have to really take your time and repeat.
Like sometimes they, like the grass issue, there was one lady who called like three times a day, either called or stopped by.
That makes sense. I took it as be careful what you, be careful what you share with residents.
Oh, yeah.
Be patient in.
The frequent flyers.
That makes sense now, okay.
Or that's what I take it anyways.
At, the one after that, individual with integrity who will be transparent and value resident attendance and participation in council meetings. Value resident attendance and participation in council meetings. I know, again, it's desired, but.
Basically.
Value and courage, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, i- it's basically just encourage public to participate and be involved.
Inviting them when they stop by city hall, making it welcoming, having agendas ready.
So it is encouraging, not value.
Anywhere in here do you find?
Hold on, maybe we should change value to encourage.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know if you heard that. Sorry, I had a minute.
And encourage resident attendance.
Does that make more sense?
Yeah, I like that.
And that, and that's what I, yeah, I think that was the intent, I apologize.
I think, yeah, that's what they were trying to say.
Okay.
The val, not value, but, yeah.
Communication is littered throughout this, which is great. Writing skills. Nowhere in here did I find anything that had to do with. Writing.
But to me, writing is part of communication.
Okay.
Whether it's the weekly update or an email, you're writing, even though you're communicating. Just isn't face-to-face.
Okay.
Or, and even, you know, a strong communication skills, if you wanted to put strong communication and writing skills.
If you wanted in writing.
I remember, John, one of the interviews that we did, we actually had the candidate during their finalist interview, said, you've got five minutes, here's a topic, write, write a press release, and they did it on the spot. Got a real good sense of how they could write.
Yeah.
So you're looking at the fourth bullet point from the bottom, council member Fay? So strong communication and writing skills?
Well, that must've been where I did it, I found some clear white space to write, writing and communication in here, and I'm trying to think where.
We can add.
Normally, you, normally I put an arrow, but I did not. So strong communication skills to keep council staff in public inform?
Strong communication and writing.
And writing skills.
Feel more complete? All right, let's add and write, and, yeah, and writing skills, that was said written, that's not right.
Because otherwise, what we get is an administrator that turns everything over to Grant.
On the next bullet point, and I would like others' perspective on this, do we want a persuasive leader or do we want an informed leader? Because I want our leader to have accurate information so we can make informed decisions. I don't want my leader to come in and say, "You should do it this way and this is why." I want to be able to make that decision myself, but have the tools to make that decision. Am I reading that?
Yeah. No, I like your language on that.
Okay, so I'd prefer that to be informed.
Perfect, okay.
And leave the persuasion up to the city council?
Right, give us the detail, we're the ones who have to live with the decisions we make. We live here, this is our home. So, give us all the information you can get for us, make sure it's accurate, and then we have to make the decision, but we get to, that's what we're elected to do, and then we get to live with the decisions we make.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. And then, council member DeLuca, you'll give Pat your words.
Yeah, I'll just give you the sheet, that'd be great.
Now you can.
Thank you.
Before we flip, I was asked to share one comment with bullet point number five.
Sure.
Leader who will break from the status quo and is willing to hold staff accountable and challenge the council to think differently about issues. They just shared that, shared that the hold staff accountable, it just seemed like, I don't know, aggressive or harsh, but I also don't know how you word that in a different way. So, it might just be reading into it.
Willing to lead the staff?
Maybe something like that.
You lead by example, setting goals, working hard.
You don't wanna be held accountable.
I'd love to be held accountable.
Well, and I also thought too, like, status quo, like, who's defining that? You know what I mean? Like, that whole bullet point to me was kinda foo fooy.
I had that whole line highlighted for it, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how you fix that though.
What if I just eliminate that line?
Can we just eliminate that bullet point?
Sure, sure.
When in doubt, just get rid of it.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, we're hiring the administrator, we know that one of their primary things is to oversee the staff, they're going to be a leader and have those. Okay. Thank you, any other feedback on page eight?
I have a question for Grant, second to the last, the second.
No, you're good.
Second to the last bullet point. Is that all the software we're working on in the office right now? Word, Excel, PowerPoint, and Panning?
Yeah, I mean, there's like smaller things, Canva for making, I don't know, advertisements, stuff like that, but I mean, really, the stuff that they're gonna be doing, it seems like this would be it and that would encompass it, so.
I got one question on eight, number eight bullet point. Good verbal and written communication skills with the ability to tailor a message to, didn't we, wouldn't that already be covered in another one?
That's covered at the fourth from the bottom.
Yeah.
Where we just added writing.
Yeah.
Good call, good catch.
Yep.
So, which one do we wanna eliminate? Good verbal and written communication skills with the ability to tailor the message to the audience, or strong communication and writing skills to keep the council staff and public informed?
Keep the second one.
Keep the second one from the bottom, yeah. All right, let's eliminate number eight, please.
Yep, okay.
Thank you, Andrew.
Didn't know we were gonna have this much feedback.
Hey, this is what I asked for, so. I appreciate it. It shows that you've done your homework and that you looked through this very carefully. That's a good thing.
We don't take it lightly.
Yes, yeah.
I do have one question, Pat, on the, because we didn't get to talk about the final interviews because you said there's some thought, maybe we do that in two nights?
Yes.
I'm a little concerned, if you follow the timeline here, June 6th would be the end, then we start sorting through them and we make a decision by June 26th. Then we're waiting almost three weeks to do final interviews. I find that very dangerous because at that point, people have been announced who are the finalists, and if past history is any indicator, you might have five, four, five finalists, but you're gonna lose one of those in between that time. I don't know why we have three weeks sitting in there.
Because part of it is us getting references from the candidates and then having to call and talk to the candidates. The other part is the background checks. Once we turn the background checks over to our third party who does that, they can't guarantee us anything more than a three week response. So, we're basically, timing and everything is, there's a lot of stuff that's happening in between there, and so it's the time that we need to hear back from everybody and to assure you.
I'll yield to you, I'm just very fearful of losing good candidates, and we lost people in previous rounds between the announcement, you're a finalist, and when we interviewed them. Yet in some cases, it was they were interviewing somewhere else and they got in ahead of us.
Which is frequently the case, these people have multiple applications out there. I mean, some individuals have life-changing events that happen during that three-week period, and so they have to withdraw. You know, that's why we recommend that you, you know, look at, you know, four to five individuals for interviews because if you lose one or two, you still wanna have good quality individuals to interview. Obviously, anybody that you interview should be someone that you could reasonably see filling the city administrative position. You're not gonna bring somebody in just to get to number five if you don't see that person being successful. But, yes, that's a great point that you bring up, and it is a frustration that we even have with the process, but.
So, if we were to do four finalists, just picking around number, is it possible?
Let's finish this first.
I thought that's where we were.
Are we done with this?
Uh, no, I guess if there's any more comment, we have page, one more page left, I don't know if.
Well, I think you're referring to the applied component, you have the dates there, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Final interviews will be held, this is saying July 18th. Well, hold that thought because it may be multiple dates if we get to that part of the discussion.
Yes.
The week of.
No, we're gonna figure it out tonight, we're gonna set dates.
Another option is if you can't make a decision tonight, we can just pull that from the profile and then, you know, obviously.
No waiting, yeah.
Once we get applicants, we're gonna reach out to them as soon as the closing date and say, "That date has been figured out, please mark your calendar."
I don't have any concern putting it down here, I'm just advocating, if we're gonna do two days, put two days on here, not one.
Yes, yep. If we're gonna do it, it should be accurate, and it should fit your schedules. So, whatever your schedules will accommodate.
Great, so do you have everything you need for the portfolio from us then?
Yes.
Other than the dates?
Yes, I will make, I will make the, I will make all the changes that we've gone through here, and we will plan on getting that posted, so.
Any other feedback from council or staff on anything for the portfolio other than the dates?
I can add more photos to that shared drive too. So, you can work on this, and I'll do that as soon as I can, so.
Okay, yeah, no, that'd be great, I'll give you a call tomorrow morning and we'll square that away. And then, Mayor, would you like to have a look at it before it goes out?
Sure.
Okay.
Mayor and council, I just have one suggestion or questions, probably for Mr. Melvin, and many times, the candidates will call City Hall to find out what their benefits are here as far as what insurance, what benefits, and I saw nothing in this relating to that, and I'm not sure if this is the time or place to talk about that, but.
So, what we typically do is as we're going through the process, we do provide all the candidates with that information. If they ask about it in advance, you know, certainly feel free to refer them to me, and I'm more than happy to share because Grant has provided us with.
Has Grant given you a cheat sheet of the benefits, sort of what we provide?
I believe.
It's in the shared drive, I believe.
Well, this is the other thing that's come up is that, and I believe Sharon will be able to explain it better to the city council, but there is an, there's something within our audit that there's been changes made with your HSA, and part of our cafeteria, you no longer have a cafeteria plan, which Bill Singer, your insurance agent, is willing to come out and talk to the council, but I think that that has to get resolved somehow because what we're current, what Sharon is currently doing and how the audit, they wanted to know if we had a cafeteria plan because we still are allowing people to pay into their HSA without pre-tax. And you can't do the pre-tax, she said, without the cafeteria plan. So, Bill Singer first told us that we did have the cafeteria plan, then he called back and said, "No, that's somewhere along the line that got changed, he doesn't know where." So, I think that the city council or someone should have a meeting and go over your benefits and find out what has been changed and has. And then, we were talking with Scott Lansman, and he said that he has not looked at any of your benefit, benefits for the employees since two administrators ago. And he said that he too felt that he should look at it to make sure that we're legal, that you're legal. So, I just brought that up for you, for you to think about.
Okay, so, I had discussions with Sharon before I went on vacation, and I, and I talked to her and Clarissa the day before I went on vacation to talk about that cafeteria plan because I had inquired, because Sharon brought that up to my attention in a meeting. And I told her that it was gonna be imperative, once I get back, that personnel address this to make sure that we're compliant. I also referenced this whole cafeteria plan, are we compliant? Because there was a desire in the vacation payout for Clarissa that if she's going to appropriate some of that monies towards an HSA and that is going tax, pre-tax, that we are compliant? And now you are telling me that we aren't compliant?
What I am telling you is that staff found out that you have not had the city attorney look at any of these changes that have, and I'm not familiar with what changes you really have made in your HSA, and because you don't have a cafeteria plan, it seems like that's, the audit has caught some of this. I'm not, I'm not really adverse in cafeteria plans and things like that, and I don't know that your staff was either in the past. Like, you know, HR is another whole, I'm not sure if Clarissa had a lot of HR experience or not. So, and when Scott Lansman said, "Oh, I haven't looked at any of the changes that the council has done or staff has done since two administrators ago." Were you at one point, who were they, I don't even know who they are? He did mention them in the.
Well, can we offline this conversation to personnel? Because there's some stuff that obviously needs to be reviewed.
And we can't discuss that here.
And back to the.
Well, I just wanted to bring it up because I don't know about the benefits, and I don't think staff wants to give out any information on the benefits until we've got it right.
I.
Thank you for that.
And I would probably just, at this point, as generically as possible, say that the city offers benefits and not be specific.
Well, but I think at some point, we are gonna have to come up with a cheat sheet of, we provide life insurance at this amount, we provide medical coverage for single coverage, full family seventy-five percent, I mean, we're gonna have to come up with something.
Cheat sheet does exist.
Okay.
Andrew and I were privy to it a couple of weeks ago, and that is gonna be the basis for this discussion that I want to have with Andrew and Shirley and myself so that we can make sure that we are compliant and doing this right because I can assure you, there's been some. We're gonna, we're gonna get things corrected.
Right.
And it's gonna start with.
So, that will give.
Personnel, and then, and then, once we achieve that, then personnel will bring it back to the city council so that we can get it in, in a documented form.
And hopefully then, Pat, has something to share with candidates, so.
Correct, and so, at this stage of the game, I think it's probably premature to say, "We offer this and this and this." And it's probably gonna require that Bill Singer.
Right.
Be involved in this discussion too.
Okay, so, time is of the essence.
Yes.
We also don't wanna say something that we don't know isn't accurate. So, at this time, benefits are offered. You and council member Birac need to schedule a meeting with Shirley and Bill Singer. And as soon as possible.
Yes.
And then, when you're ready, as soon as possible, bring it to council so it can be official. So, can you guys work on that offline, knowing that that's of the priority?
We did talk with Mr. Singer, and he said he'd be willing to come and talk to the city council if you want that, or he can meet with just.
I'll trust the three of you offline to figure that out, and then, when you're ready, bring it to the council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Sorry about that.
No. We want accurate information and we don't want, you know, Pat to go back and retract things, so that's important. Okay, anything else related to the portfolio or feedback? Okay, then as council member DeLuca already alluded to, and next on our agenda is the scheduling and the dates for those. So, the first one we need to look at is the selection of finalists. The date that DDA has opposed is June 26th, which we currently have a council meeting and workshop. I'm wondering if Tuesday, the 27th would work? There's nothing on the city calendar in the evening. I just, it's gonna be too much to do that in conjunction with a workshop and a council meeting just from doing this in years past, it needs a night of its own.
Okay. Fine.
The only other option, which, Pat, you would have to tell me if this is even a viable option, do you think we'd be ready to do that by Monday, June 19th, the week prior? Since council typically keeps Monday nights open and we don't have any meetings that night?
I apologize for my overcommitment on that.
No, that's okay, I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
Okay, are you available Tuesday, June 27th? Should we look at that or not?
I apologize again, I do have a commitment on the 27th, Tuesday, the 27th of June.
Okay.
Wednesday, Thursday?
Wednesdays are out, I know council member Francis is not available on Wednesdays. And I think it's crucial that all five of us are there, I'm not, I mean, barring a life emergency.
What about Thursday? Thursday, the 29th, would that be?
That would work for me.
Thursday, what, the 29th?
The 29th, yep.
The 29th?
Let me just text.
Are there late afternoon opportunities on Monday or Tuesday? If you're committed in the evenings?
You know, so Monday, the 26th, I would be open throughout the day if you wanted. Are you thinking to do something in the morning and then you'd have your workshop and your council meeting in the evening? Is that where you're going, council member?
No, I said, later afternoon.
On the 26th, I would be available.
But you don't wanna do that, Julie, with the other meetings?
Well, I mean, when we've done this in the past.
Yeah.
That was a very long meeting. And we already have meetings from 5:30 to 8:30 or 9:00. And we already have meetings from five-thirty to eight-thirty or nine. So I, I don't think that's a good idea, but that's all we can.
If you move the twenty-sixth to the twenty-ninth, but interviews are still on or around the eighteenth. We haven't really lost anything. As long as the interviews don't move out due to this rescheduling. But that would be background checks and things of that nature. Can you?
I would have to double check on that to see.
Councilmember Francis is available the twenty-ninth of June. So the twenty-ninth of June works for all of us. So Pat, I guess we'll wait to hear from you then.
Okay, yep, I will get back to you tomorrow and hopefully it won't.
How long of a meeting would you anticipate, since you've done these more than we have?
You know, it really depends on how much agreement there is with council. I would guess at a minimum, probably about a twenty, twenty-five minute meeting. Basically.
It just took us an hour and ten minutes to do the portfolio.
Yes. Well, you're going to have all the, basically what's going to happen is you're going to have all the information on the candidates a week in advance. You're going to come here and we're going to go around the table. And I'm going to say, give me your top four, three or four choices. Go around the table. And then if there's agreement amongst you, that's what I'm saying, twenty, twenty-five minutes. If there's not a lot of agreement and there's all, things are all over the place. Then it could take an hour and a half. It could take longer. But I've, and I think I mentioned this to you earlier. When we were doing the recruitment for the City of Now Then. You know, there was a lot of speculation that you're going to have a very difficult time getting us all on the same page. And we went in there and within twenty, twenty-five minutes, we had, we, we had agreement. So it, it depends on the candidates. But, you know, you're going to be making a decision based on a video interview and on a personality assessment and their cover letter and their resume. So you're going to have some information.
Yeah.
So mayor?
Yes.
As an alternative way of looking at this and knowing schedules, what if we moved it? If we're all available on Thursday, we could do the workshop that we were going to do on Monday, on Thursday, and do the, use the time slot ahead of council meeting to select the finalists. That just bought us three days.
If we can make the twenty-ninth work, I would rather not do that. Because you and I both know that sometimes things take longer. And I'd hate to be boxed into an end time of a seven o'clock start time, so.
I've been known to be long-winded.
This group talks. And, and I'm okay with that, but we know that, so we have to allow for that. Andrew's not, Nina said yes too, so.
I'm, I'm immediately thinking, we're looking at an hour and a half.
Yeah, I'm.
Just, just to throw it out. If we get done before that, great.
Well, and if. So the nineteenth doesn't work. Do you want us to look at Thursday, the twenty-second?
Nineteenth of what?
Of June?
June.
Because Pat's not available. I just lost my dates. Would you rather us look at Thursday, the nineteenth versus Thursday, the?
No, not.
Twenty, I mean twenty-second, Thursday, the twenty-second versus Thursday, the twenty-ninth? Do you want us to look at that one?
What time on the twenty-second would you be thinking?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty? I do have a commitment, but I can see if I could possibly move that.
Will that be enough if June sixth to the twenty-second to get the background?
Actually, that's the leak conference, isn't it?
Yep.
Why is that not on my calendar? I take that back. You'll be gone too. We'll be at the leak conference.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Birak.
Yeah, no.
When would you know about the twenty-ninth?
I'll be able to find that out tomorrow morning.
Okay. Are we comfortable with waiting for that? Or do we need to find an alternative date right now? Right, we'll hope for the twenty-ninth. If that doesn't work, we'll do a doodle poll tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, then the next are the interviews dates, which DDA has proposed July eighteenth. And I asked Pat if we could break that down into two evenings. Was wondering if we could do the seventeenth and the eighteenth. And then making a decision on the eighteenth as well. They originally had all interviews on decision in one night. But knowing our group, I think we need two nights. No disrespect.
Not to stretch us out any longer than it needs to. I don't know if I'm comfortable interviewing on a Monday and interviewing on a Tuesday and then making a final decision without having an opportunity to sit down and, unless the interviews go just well. I like to process.
So you want three nights? I mean, DDA is proposing one. I already pushed by asking for two.
Interviews in one night with, with, with an opportunity to to make a decision the following night.
That could potentially be four hours of interviewing in one night with no time to debrief in between them. That's a lot after a full day's work.
It, it's. You have the potential to disenfranchise either the two on Monday or the two on Tuesday by making a decision on Tuesday night. It's a possibility. Because everything, if you get done with two interviews on Tuesday, for example, everything is fresh. And you're making a comparison against the two candidates on Monday. It no longer is fresh. I don't know.
Well, I was actually proposing that we would do three interviews on Monday. One interview on Tuesday and then deliberate and make a decision. Just to break things up. I mean, I know it's still not ideal. But I think even three hours straight of interviewing after a full day's of work is a lot.
Right, and then of course, you've got the candidates being able to make that schedule as well. I mean, I recall the interviews we did with, with the recruitment professionals. We had to move you to a Thursday because you couldn't come on Monday. So I mean, we have that potential there too. That not, three of them can't make it on a Monday. And one of them can't make it on a Tuesday. So I mean, it's difficult, but.
The, the reason for putting it into the profile is that, you know, we're getting it out there. And so they, if they can't make those dates work, well, then basically what we're saying is, you know, if you can't make that work, it's really tough for us to even interview you.
Okay.
So. Schedules are one of the most difficult things to work out, especially among busy people like you.
Well, and summer, I think, is even, adds a whole new level.
Yeah.
Other thoughts, Councilmember Birak, Councilmember DeLuca?
I think trying to cram four interviews in one night is going to get to be a long night. And I got a feeling that the last candidate probably will not get the full attention that they deserve.
Hence the disenfranchise that I mentioned earlier. Whether it's the first group or the second group, someone's going to get disenfranchised. Because.
And I mean, stretching it out even more days is adding more problems. But having to make a decision on Tuesday. I think it's our best option that we have in front of us. To do it two nights, make a decision.
Well, and if we come to the end of the night on Tuesday and we're truly not ready to make a decision, we're not going to just flippantly make a decision. We can at that time, I mean, unfortunately, it would have to be three days before we could call a special meeting. Or we could.
Could re-interview if you have two good candidates. You could schedule another interview with them.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to settle. And I'm not going to, just because it's getting late and I'm tired, going to put names in the hat. And who knows? It could be very clear. I mean, we could, we could, you know, this might not even be an issue. I think we're just going from past experience. So I'm thinking of all different scenarios, which is important.
So for tonight, just scheduling the seventeenth and eighteenth for interviews. How many we end up with? We could have five or six people we want to talk to and have long nights. We could have three or four and they'd be easy. We don't need to make that call tonight.
Okay, I'm just texting with Connie quick. And both the seventeenth and eighteenth work for you?
Yes, we do.
By the way, did, she had some questions on the document?
We got them all.
Did you get them all?
Yeah, there was only the one I had to read of hers, otherwise. Okay, both July seventeenth and eighteenth work for Councilmember Francis. I believe they work for everyone around this table. So you and I can work out the details of the schedule then, later.
So we are talking about the evening of the seventeenth and eighteenth, correct? Okay.
And then we'll allow dinner breaks in there or something. We'll figure it out. We can do that offline, can't we? Are you guys good if I work with Pat and set the schedule and allow dinner? And Shirley and we'll figure in dinners and timing. Are people able to start like at four, four-thirty, or is five the earliest?
I should be able to make.
Even if we could do four-thirty?
We can make that work.
Could you do four-thirty? Do you do four-thirty? Okay, I'll check with Councilmember Francis. And then Pat, you and I and Shirley can work out the details of the two nights.
Okay, okay.
How's that?
Yeah, for the purposes of the profile, I'll just indicate the evening of.
Perfect.
Of the seventeenth and eighteenth.
All right.
Make sure that, yeah. Touche, good job. Way to go, team.
And then one other thing, Pat, for you before we move on this evening. On the timeline in this contract, would you please add the one-year review on there as well?
One year review.
Just so we know, those are things that you're still committed to?
Okay, I think, didn't I put that?
Oh, you just wrote follow-up. DDA will follow up periodically with the new administrator.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, this one.
On the timeline, yep.
Granted, I know we won't have that date right away, but.
Because I think I included it in the proposal.
It's in the contract.
But not on the timeline, so.
Right, not on the timeline with the action items. Perfect. Any other business regarding city administrator portfolio transition hiring?
I guess just maybe a question, you know, in some communities, they do something to kind of highlight the city of Maple Plain with candidates. That certainly isn't anything that has to be done. But just something for you to think about. Obviously, I'll be coming back, you know, once we take a look at the candidates. And I'll be coming back at that date and we'll kind of finalize what the schedule is. But we've got, you know, kind of good definition here for the seventeenth and eighteenth. But if you would like, what other communities have done is they've, you know, the mayor has maybe gone off on a bus with the candidates and they've driven around town and they've just talked a little bit about, you know, some of the facilities, different things. And again, you don't have to do anything. And I think in, you know, during COVID, certainly a lot of that was, you know, put a halt to. But, you know, whether it be something like that or even if there's some information that you want them to review or something so that they are a little more informed when they come in for you. It's certainly up to you.
I know last time we offered each candidate a riding tour of Maple Plain with the mayor. People are okay with that, I'm happy to do that again.
The mayor would love to do that again.
If council's okay with that. Okay, I'm happy to do that again.
Okay.
And then in terms of public input and staff input, you'll work on all those dates and how that will happen?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, if you'd like both the staff and the public, yeah, we can work on figuring that out. So again, we're well ahead of, of schedule in terms of when we need to put that together. But I certainly.
Just making sure it's still on there.
Yes, so, so what we'll plan to do is we'll basically plan on having, you know, those, the seventeenth and the eighteenth. We will have three sets of interviews going kind of concurrently. So staff will be doing an interview, a public interview group as well as the council. And we'll just rotate people through. Basically, the staff as well as the residents, they are going to be providing input. Because ultimately, you are the ones who are making the decision. But they can provide input to tell you, you know, for instance, this person, you know, had great eye, eye contact. And really, when they were talking about economic development, had a lot of knowledge. They're not going to be telling you, my first choice, my second choice are these candidates. But they're going to be providing you with input to use. Because they won't have access to all the information that you'll have. They'll be able to look at the cover letter and the resume. You will have access to more information.
I don't have the, that timetable in front of me. Can you clarify how that's going to work? So we're interviewing on the seventeenth and eighteenth. And you're saying that staff, as well as a small segment of the public, will have an opportunity to do interviewing of the candidates as well?
Correct.
And they are going to supply input to the city council?
Yes.
And we're going to make a decision after the final interview on Tuesday? Not a chance. So you probably, I mean, if we're going to get input from staff. We're not going to get that until the close of the final interview.
But the staff and community input don't have to be done on the same day that we are meeting with them.
But that, I just asked them if they're going to be.
And he just said they were going to be.
But I just said they didn't have to be.
Oh, okay.
And I should say, the staff and the resident interview is going to be shorter. So you guys are going to have a hour with the candidates. And the staff and the residents are maybe going to have a half an hour.
And how are you going to formulate their thoughts to us that?
They're going to complete a feedback form, which has three questions, three or four questions on it. And what we're going to do is we're going to gather that up at the end of the evening. We're going to send it back to DDA. And Liz, who's working with me, is going to summarize that. And we're going to turn it around and provide it to you as the council, so that you can read through that.
Okay, so I got a better idea then. So I go back to my original thought, two on Monday, two on Tuesday. And make a decision on Wednesday after we've had a chance to overnight our thoughts as well as the thoughts from staff. So that we can make a informed decision the following night.
I'm just going to share with you kind of like a schedule that we had. And this was just a two-night interview with the city of Now Then. This is just a public document, so it just kind of shows us how we have people and schedule.
Thank you.
So I think the question, Pat, is if.
So I think the question, Pat, is if staff, you know, follow along the same with candidate eight, one, two, three, four, five.
Yep.
If Monday and Tuesday, staff is meeting with people at the same time we're meeting with people, and you're going to send that back to Liz to summarize, she's not going to get to that until Tuesday. We won't see it till Tuesday night.
Well, yeah, my assumption is that if we do on Monday, if you're going to be doing two candidates per night, yeah, you won't have it until later.
So we can't make a decision Tuesday night. We won't have the input unless you do those meetings prior to the Monday and Tuesday, the 19th.
Yeah, which doesn't make sense, so. You know, we obviously want the residents to come to go through two sets of, well, three sets of interviews.
Well, we're not, I'm comfortable speaking on behalf of the council that we will not be comfortable making a decision without getting feedback from staff and residents, so that timeline will not work.
Okay.
So then we either need we're going to have to do a third night.
Can I just, um, the way, mayor and councilman, the way that they did it in the city of Arlington, they had three candidates, and they invited them in, like, about 11 o'clock in the morning, and staff and the public were able to come into City Hall and visit with them. And then, at 3 o'clock that afternoon, the city council did the interviews. But now we're talking about one whole day. But then, the council was just able, I mean, the council didn't sit down with each staff member. The staff just said, gee, you know, I really liked this person, or I really liked that person. Could, someone could type up what the staff had to say, so that you have that. I mean, it's not like, you know, everyone felt good, and, and the people that looked really good on paper were not the ones that we, that they chose in the end. It was completely different. So I think it's important that you meet these people and kind of, we had coffee and cookies, and it was from 11 to 1:00 that people stopped in at City Hall to visit, and then the interview started at 1:30. That's just how it happened in that city. That's all I can tell you.
Well, and that information is invaluable. And, I mean, staff, they're together day to day in the trenches, so that feedback is, is crucial.
Absolutely.
But I do not want that information before I get an opportunity to ask a candidate any questions. And in that situation, if you were just to use this, the last interview, the fifth individual here in this now-then schedule that you gave us, is a 6:30 interview with deliberations starting an hour and 15 minutes after the beginning of that interview, which is same as everyone else, at an hour and 15. So now I have, now I'm going to take this written information that has been formulated by your staff, and now I get to review that information along with my own notes and my own thinking, and we're going to deliberate at 7:45. I, I just don't see this timetable working. I'm sorry, Pat.
If we do, if we do.
But here, maybe you, maybe here, they could have done three on Monday, and then you wouldn't have had that late of time. You know, if one of these had been on a Monday, like, do three one day, just like one of the councilmen suggested, and do one on the night of the.
I think the key is we, we value staff and public feedback.
Yes.
So if they're going to be collecting that Monday and Tuesday, DDA has to have time to get it to us Tuesday night. We review it, we simply come back Wednesday. I know nobody's cherishing three nights in a row, but unless staff and, and, unless the staff and public feedback, feedback could be done in some other way the week before, and you're saying that's not possible.
Well, I, I'm just thinking that you're going to have to invite the candidates in for.
Twice then.
Yes, and some of them, we don't know right now, but some of them may be coming from
Correct.
out of state.
Well, and last time we did it, it was done via Zoom for this, oh, that was COVID, because staff and public were Zoom.
It's, it's not the timing in which staff and public gets an opportunity to interview, and DDA is able to put the documentation together, it's when council gets that documentation prior to deliberations, and I'm just saying, at five minutes prior to deliberations, to have your staff say, phew, I got it done, here it is, I, you know, I formulated it because you had only one on that second day, I, that's just not how it works.
Well, I'm.
And I would hope you'd appreciate it.
Well, last time, city council did it in three times.
We're making this much harder than it has to be. If staff and public feedback is going to be Monday and Tuesday, have DDA collect that feedback, summarize it Tuesday late afternoon when they're done.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
And get it to council Tuesday night. We deliberate with what we saw, what comments came, and we get together, deliberate, and decide on Wednesday.
If I, yeah, if I have, if I have DDA's assessment from staff and public
Correct.
Thursday, or Tuesday sometime, so that I can have an opportunity to look at, along with my own notes and mail, but I'm more prepared to come in on Wednesday to deliberate.
But now on Tuesday night, we're still going to be doing interviews, correct?
Correct.
So we won't be able to have that to you Tuesday afternoon?
No.
No, you, you'll be doing staff. When are the, when are the candidates on Tuesday afternoon meeting with the, with the staff and public, before us?
Y- yes, so.
Okay.
It would be in the evening, if you consider 4:30, 5 o'clock.
Like you did here. Right, like you did it here, the candidates come in early, they kind of, there they took a tour. And then they, and city staff gave them a half an hour? Is that kind of how you were doing it?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, there we had it done by 5:00.
Andrew, this is what we did last time. This is what I was showing Councilmember DeLuca and Councilmember Fay. I didn't mean to exclude you. I also sent that to Pat ahead of time.
We did not have, yeah, in, in that situation, we did not have staff interviews with the city of Mount. Simply because they had a very new staff. We really didn't have a in-depth understanding of how
I kept it.
Local government was.
So relatively easy here.
Yes.
Monday and Tuesday, ahead of when they meet with us, you're going to have public and staff interviews for these folks coming in.
Correct.
They're going to do this in three phases, staff, public, then the council.
Yep.
So by the time you get to us at 5:00 or so, they're done. Your staff could put that together early Tuesday night, get it out to us. We'd have it Tuesday night to deliberate. We come back Wednesday.
Yes, you would have it Tuesday night, yes.
But we deliberate on Wednesday.
That's what I said.
Yes. So you could sleep on it, and then you'd have it for the next morning discussion.
Sometime Tuesday night, your team gets us that, so we can put it with the fresh thoughts we just met the last two days with these outstanding candidates.
Yes.
That means we need a Wednesday meeting.
Which we know doesn't work for Councilmember Francis.
Is there a way of making it work for one time?
Would that be the 19th then?
Yes, that'd be the 19th, then, that you'd have your council meeting, and at that time, you'd have all the information, and you would make your, make your decision. I assume that would be a start time of about 4:35 again? Is that correct? Or?
I'd prefer it to be later if we can, after leaving work two days early Monday and Tuesday, but if.
Whatever the council's desire is, I will, I'm available.
I just texted Councilmember Francis to see if she can meet on Wednesday, the 19th as well, to make a decision. And she said no.
She can't make it? Always is it for her?
Yeah, she's always said Wednesdays are out.
Thursday, the 20th, about her shed. 6:00 P.M.?
Yep.
She can't have the whole night?
I'm, I just, I said earlier.
Can she give us part of the night?
That's what I just said earlier, later. Or could we do Wednesday or Thursday morning?
Could you schedule, possibly schedule the staff? I mean, you only have four staff, really? Or would you invite all of your consultants?
I'm envisioning the same group that was interviewed to help put this portfolio together, for sure.
Okay, and who are they?
Uh, that was planning, police, fire.
All right, so then you probably would need, I was thinking maybe.
Public Works.
Thank you, yeah.
We had a member of the public just.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, could we, mayor, hold late afternoon on the 19th? See if she's okay with that. If it had to shift a little into the evening, we could do that, but just get a whole placeholder?
She's in, she has a commitment until 7:30. She says she could do the morning of the 19th anytime after 8:00. Does Wednesday morning, the 19th, look like at 8:00?
Time do you want to do it? 8?
8.
Fine.
And that'll get people, you can read it when you get home, and then put your thoughts together. Yeah, does that work? Councilmember Barrett, does that work for you and Rick?
I can, should be able to make that work.
Sorry.
I, we're still trying to finalize everything for July. So I don't know exact dates yet.
Well, let's for now. We'll commit to sometime on the 19th. We'll figure it out next time we're all five together. But for DDA's timeline, we'll make the decision on the 19th.
Yep.
Does that sound good?
I'll make that work.
Okay, maybe we'll try and call Councilmember Francis after, put her on speaker, and we'll figure it out.
Okay.
All right, so interviews will be the 17th, the 18th. A decision will be made sometime on the 19th of July. Is that everything that's needed for the portfolio?
Yes.
Anything else you need from us?
No, I appreciate your time very much. I'm sorry that this was as cumbersome as it was.
I just lost my agenda. All right, with that then, are there any council reports or other business this evening?
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember DeLuca to adjourn, second by Barrett. Any further discussion? All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. We will take a 10-minute recess.